Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the July 7th Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, we have several of both or all. Tomorrow on Wednesday, if you are traveling on I-90 between Post Falls and Cord Lane, or Friday, either Wednesday or Friday, you will experience traffic delays in the area of Greens Ferry overpass construction. The contractor will be pouring the concrete deck on the overpass and there will be varying single lane closures on eastbound and westbound lanes as they pour the concrete to avoid placement over live traffic. The work is scheduled from approximately 4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and I believe the schedule on Wednesday is the eastbound slow lane. They'll do the others on Friday. On Thursday, July 9th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., the Jack will host an open house where I will unveil the new fish sculpture that will welcome everyone to the city center. Artist Harmony Conley Oaks, also an employee, will be on hand. The sculpture will be installed on Spokane Street in time for the Post Falls Festival. Donations are being accepted for this public art project and a commemorative coin will be available. If you would like to donate or purchase coins, please contact the Chamber of Commerce at 773-5016. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the Cord Lane Tribe for their contribution of, I believe, approximately $2,500 for the sculpture itself, so very generous donation from the tribe. The annual Post Falls Festival starts this Friday at Camellon Park and continues through the weekend. Some of the events scheduled for this year are, on Thursday, the Camellon Park Boat Launch will be closed during Post Falls Festival Days, July 10th, 11th, and 12th. The Boat Launch will close Thursday, the 9th, at noon through Sunday, the 12th. On Friday, the big back end lawnmower races at 6:00 p.m. at the Chamber of Commerce parking lot, which is next to City Hall. The Blue Dog RV Movie Night in the Park, featuring the movie Paddington, will be shown at dusk. The movie is free. Bring your lawn chairs and you can also donate a bear and help us fill police car with new or gently-used teddy bears to comfort a child in crisis, and that movie will also be at Camellon Park. Saturday, the parade starts at 10:00 a.m. on Southeast Way, starting at Spokane Street and ending at Idaho Street. There's a car show and shine from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Calvary Lutheran Church, 1011 North Compton Street. Big Wheel Race at 12:30 at Camellon Park. Fire Station Open House from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at 404 North Idaho Street. Music, entertainment, food, and craft booths are all at the park during the weekend, and you can check the city's website for the full scheduled events. And on July 1st, it was my pleasure to participate in the groundbreaking for the Post Falls Senior Center expansion. Counselor Henderson, Malloy, and Thorson were also at the event, and it's great to see the Senior Center be able to make some much-needed improvements to their facility to expand the services they offer, and we look forward to the completion and the impact, positive impact it will have. On the presentations, the first is a presentation of both the Road Scholar and Roadmasters award, the Keith Hardy and, is it Leila Crawl?
Yes.
Did I pronounce it well? From the Local Highway Assistance Council will present.
As you mentioned, I'm Leila Crawl. I work at LTAC, the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council. I manage a few different programs for LTAC, but the one I'm here to talk about today is our T-2 Center program. The T-2 Center provides training and technical assistance for all of the local highway jurisdictions in the state of Idaho, so from the small cities to the highway districts to the counties, we cover them all. All employees of those agencies are welcome to take classes through the T-2 Center, as well as outside private members as well. The technical assistance portion of the T-2 Center comes from any jurisdiction, any employee can pick up the phone and call us and ask for help. Maybe it's a sign height requirement or oil distribution, anything like that that would be under technical assistance. We help in that phase, and then we also provide the courses, the training courses. We provide courses all over the state for about six months a year, three to four months in the spring and a couple months in the fall, and those courses cover a variety of topics. We have the safety courses, professional development courses, and then a large pool of maintenance-type courses. We are always adding to those selected courses that we provide so that we can continue that training effort out to the local jurisdictions. We have two steps in the T-2 Center program that are for the training, two training programs, and the first one is our Road Scholar program. The program is about 80 hours of instructions and about 10 courses, and the employees have four years to complete that program. And again, those courses are, as I mentioned, the safety, the professional development, and the maintenance courses. When an employee completes his Road Scholar program, then I come and present him with an award. So, you want to come up? Keith Hardy has completed his Road Scholar program, and with that, the award includes a certificate stating that he is a Road Scholar. A hat that says LTAC T-2 Road Scholar, and then a leatherman that's inscribed with T-2 After an employee completes that program, we encourage them to continue on to the Roadmaster program, and those courses, again, build on what they've learned in the Road Scholar program. So it's about another 80 hours of instruction that they have four years to complete it, though once in a while they go faster. And many of the courses, which I forgot to mention, require an exam, and it's an 80% to pass those classes, so we want to make sure the employees aren't just coming, sitting through a class, but actually retaining that information and bringing it back to you guys here at the city. Once in a while, we have an employee who goes above and beyond, and Keith has done that. He has completed both programs in 13 months, and to my knowledge, that's the fastest anyone has completed both. So again, they normally have four years to complete each, so this could last in eight years, and Keith did it in 13 months, which I think is incredible. That's about 20 courses that he's taken over the last 13 months to complete the program. So with that, I want to recognize Keith Hardy again for completing the Roadmaster program. Another certificate.
Another certificate.
And a Carhartt jacket that says LTAC T-2 Center Roadmaster.
I need that jacket today. I need the hat.
At this time, I had asked Keith if he wanted to share anything about the program with you, and he graciously accepted.
This is a great program. I know, you know, on a day-to-day basis, we have employees that come to work for the city and they don't really know exactly where to start and where to begin, what to do on how to build roads, how to maintain roads. This program helps out tremendously. It's a great start for any employee that hasn't had a background in road building or road maintenance. We learn a lot about drainage, roadway materials, traffic control, just endless amounts, culverts, how to properly install those type of devices. I could go on and on, but it's a tremendous program, and I hope that the city continues that for its employees.
Thanks. One of the emphasis for us is to make sure that those efficiencies and proper techniques are coming back to all the local jurisdictions, and this program is a way that we are able to report to the legislature each year that we know that we're teaching those efficiencies because it's coming back to you guys at the city level. One thing to piggyback on that note is that this last legislative season, there were some comments made during revenue enhancement, the Revenue Enhancement Bill, that ITD has become more efficient, but what are the local jurisdictions doing? And when that split and that percentage was being discussed, that was one thing that was brought up a lot. So LTAC has decided to add an award at the local level, an Innovation Award. It's available on our website, so anyone can go take a look at the application. It's a one-page application, and there's a cash award for an individual if an individual applies for that, or there's a jurisdictional award if the city streets department wanted to apply. We are trying to gather that information and celebrate the innovation and efficiencies that the locals are doing as well. We hear over and over about the state level, but we are aware that the locals are being efficient, but we want to make sure everyone is aware of that. So this program and the Innovation Award dovetail nicely as the jurisdiction who wins the award will get a T-2 class onsite with lunch provided for their employees, so. Are there any questions for me?
I just had a question. Did you mention how long, Keith, that you've been with the city, and I missed it?
I've been three years, three and a half years permanent, four years.
Nice. Thanks. Stick around.
That's a keeper. 13 months, like I said, I think that's the, in my, in my knowledge, that's the fastest anyone's completed both programs, so a big kudos to Keith, and thank you to the city for supporting the program.
Thank you, Keith. Could I have you come forward? Council would like to shake your hand and thank you for your efforts, and you set the bar awfully high. Congratulations and thanks for your efforts.
Congratulations. Good job. I will be getting Keith's picture also, and it will be in our newsletter that goes out to all jurisdictions in the state of Idaho. Recognize him for his award.
Congratulations. Thanks for your efforts.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Leila.
Thank you.
Now, it's my pleasure to ask two outstanding young ladies, Julie Mignot and Micah Sharples, to join me now front.
First, we're talking about the Clay Larkin Mayor's Youth Awards, and I get the opportunity to present these two young ladies with the awards tonight. I'd like to thank Allen, Spokane Teachers Credit Union, for their continued support of the project, and also Nathan Hull, who has volunteered for the Youth Awards Committee since its inception 13 years ago. I've already presented the 2015 Youth Awards to the Mullin Trail Student Council, Cub Scouts PAC 13, Jonathan Borick, and Shane Corsi. Tonight, I am pleased to present awards to these young ladies. Julie Mignot just completed the 5th grade at Mullin Trail Elementary and was nominated by 1st grade teacher Rita Wright. Julia served as a member of the Safety Patrol to ensure safe street crossings for students. She also volunteered to monitor building access and serve as a school greeter. She gave up her own free time every day to tutor a 1st grader in math, working one-on-one to build the younger students' skills and self-confidence. Julia is recognized as a student who has worked very hard to be a productive young leader among her peers. Thank you, Julia. And Micah Sharples, a student at Post Falls Middle School, just completed the 7th grade. She was nominated by Sandy Jacobson Honors English Teacher. She qualified for state in the Math is Cool and 1st LEGO League, taught Math is Cool to 4th graders, volunteered for Iron Man and numerous other community projects, and served in the after-school tutoring program to help other students build their academic skills, academic skills. Micah is a member of the National Junior Honor Society. As I've said before, with young people such as yourself coming up, we're in good shape, so thank you all, thank you both for your efforts, and this is to Micah.
Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations. Sort it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Congratulations.
Again, congratulations, ladies, and thank you to those who nominated them. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda. My computer's coming up. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Seeing none, would you like to present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the June 16th, 2015 council meeting. Item B is payables, June 9th through June 29th, 2015. Item C is memorandum of understanding shared services agreement with the City of Rath Room for building and mechanical inspections. Item D is request to auction six surplus vehicles from the city's fleet. Item E is request to surplus dispose of computer equipment. Request, I'm sorry, item F is request to dispose of two drug seizure vehicles from the police department's fleet. Item G is conditional completion of rights of way Highway 41, Salties Way to Mullin Bike Ped Trail Project. Item H is easement acquisition from Cord Lane Enterprise to the Highway 41 Salties Way to Mullin Bike Trail Project. Item I is Salties Way to Mullin Avenue Bike Ped Trail State Local Agreement Construction. Item J is wastewater capacity replacement fee agreement with Michael J. Erling at 1808 Second Avenue. Item K is Greens Ferry Overpass easement with Chris Sprinkle at 560 North Greens Ferry Road.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I have a couple of quick. Couple of questions. On the item C memorandum of understanding, under the considerations, talks about the compensation, but it doesn't really get into detail about how the compensation's calculated?
It's calculated based upon the wage of the employee that we would be reimbursing or Rath Room would reimburse to us, so our different inspectors are paid at different rates. It would include their benefit and their, it would be their full benefited rate.
Does it include their travel time?
No, we agreed not to include travel time because there'll be travel time on both sides.
Okay. And then the other question on that was, it talks about, at the end of the year, we compare the time that each spent. What if that doesn't match up?
Then either the City of Post Falls would cut Rath Room a check or Rath Room would cut City of Post Falls a check.
No, but I guess what I'm getting at is, what if, who's keeping track of the time? Because I guess if, say we do an inspection.
Accounts receivable, yeah. Accounts receivable, who is also our payroll clerk, will keep track of the hours, and so we'll have both a billing and a payable.
So we're not going to run into a situation where Rath Room says, well, we used them for 152 hours, and we say, no, you used them for 162 hours?
We shouldn't, no, because those, the invoice will still go over to Rath Room even though we don't pay or they're not going to pay us, so we'd send the invoice to them.
But if there's a discrepancy, we'd know about it.
Right.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Thought it entertained a motion.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Hisong.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is public hearings. We have none. Up next is unfinished business, Project TAP, Jaclyn property.
And I put this under unfinished business because initially, Jaclyn's were provided agreement by council to waive the annexation fees and the building permit fees when Unitech had agreed to locate in their facility. Since that time, Unitech has decided to stay in Hayden, and Jaclyn's has brought forward a new project called Project TAP, which we now know as Trans American Auto Parts, and they'll have both a warehouse and a retail located there, along with, there's another fabrication or molding company that's coming in with them. And so they brought forward the request again to waive the annexation fees and part or all of the building permit fees so that we would have that for a match for the Opportunity Grant Fund, which they're still, I believe, in the running for. So I can take any questions from the council.
Questions on that?
Can the waiver be conditional on obtaining the grant?
Yes.
Okay. Is it written that way?
The motion can be any way that the council desires it to be, so.
Makes sense.
You can, you can also state that the entity or the Trans American Auto has to actually locate and create the jobs.
Did that answer everybody's questions? And so, are you looking for a motion tonight?
Yes.
I'm not sure how to make the official motion, but I move to waive the requested annexation and permit fees under the conditions that the TAP project does indeed locate the Post Falls and employ, the minimum number of employees required to obtain the grant and that the grant is actually obtained.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. If you have a question, John?
Just the ones that are listed in here.
Okay. You okay?
Yeah, I was just confirming with Shelley what exactly had been waived, and so.
Good. Shannon, would you please take the roll?
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hisong.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda. If you care to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record, and we'll give you five minutes to talk.
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dan, Ryan, Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and wanted to just take the opportunity this evening to introduce you to our newest addition to our staff. Division Chief Steve Isaacson is our new EMS chief. Steve comes to us from just outside Kansas City with a wealth of experience in not just fire, but also EMS administration. He's a certified paramedic, and as soon as we get through all the red tape with the state of Idaho, he'll actually be able to practice here as a, as a paramedic. So I'll turn it over to Steve if he's got a few things he'd like to add, and we welcome him to our department.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, thank you very much. Hi, everybody. My name is Steve Isaacson. I'm from the city of Overland Park, Kansas, a city which is a suburb of Kansas City and looks remarkably a lot like Post Falls, Idaho. It is surely my pleasure to be here, and I thank you and look forward to many years working with you and the citizens of Post Falls. Any questions or?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome to Post Falls. You're off to a heck of a start, it seems like, this summer, too.
(inaudible). Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Jacobson and the city council, my name is Kristy Stutsky. My husband and I own a building at the corner of Spokane Street and 7th, known as 702 North Spokane Street, formerly designer One Hair Fashions and the Laundromat. We recently leased that building to a business called Enoteca. They hope to be moved into that building by the end of this month, as that's when their temporary liquor license goes into a permanent liquor license, and they have to operate out of that address. It's my understanding that the city council has different classifications for businesses. I don't know exactly which type of business falls into which classification, but apparently a bar/restaurant and a retail beer and wine shop does not fall into the same category as a beauty salon or a laundromat. Therefore, my new tenants are being asked what we feel are rather ridiculous requirements for a building and a parking lot that is already in existence. They're not changing the structure. There's nothing changing about the building or the parking lot whatsoever, except apparently this class of business. I would like to find out what difference does it make in an existing building, what type of business goes in, as long as it's legal and they're conducting business according to law. It's also our understanding, because of there being a change of business in that location, that there has to be 30% shade in the parking lot, along with underground sprinklers. Now, never mind if we'd have stayed there, those would not be required of us, or if a class of business would be going in there similar to ours, it would not be required of them. You're going to be remodeling Spokane Street, as well as 7th Street, for a stoplight, so should my tenants put in underground sprinklers and shade trees, they'll likely be torn out. Waste of money. This is an upscale business going in in a part of Post Falls that's highly needed. I'm going to ask that the council somehow figure out a way that our building at 702 North Spokane Street be in the same class of business that's trying to go in there. Prior to our being in that location as a beauty salon and a laundromat, there was a sandwich shop. They serve food. Our new business is going to be serving food. There was a sea store prior to that. They sold beer and wine. So I think that's possible that you could grandfather in that building to fall under that category, as it's my understanding that's been done with other businesses in this community that haven't met parking lot requirements or shade in their parking lot. And last but not least, it's my understanding the city of Post Falls will not allow bills to be sent to anyone but the person whose name is on the tax record. So that being said, that means that my new tenant at 702 North Spokane Street will be receiving my mail and will be opening it in order to be able to pay their bills. That's a federal offense. You can't take other people's mail out of that mailbox and open it. So I saw on your agenda that if something is considered an emergency circumstance, that hopefully it will be taken care of very quickly, and I'm going to ask that this be dealt with quickly, as my tenants would like to be up and running out of that business by July 30th because of their temporary liquor license, and that somehow you figure out that it's not necessary for them to make these changes, that if they were in a different class of business, they wouldn't have to. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stutsky. Russ, you're on top of this. You've been dealing, I know I had visited with the tenants, and you have been in conversation with them as well?
We have, yes.
Can you perhaps during the coming week provide us, or this week, provide counsel an update on where we are, what's required, and whether or not there are any opportunities to try to meet some of the requests Ms. Stutsky made? Good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lee?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me just take a moment of your time tonight. I'm named Tom Leon with the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and I would like to present our new commissioner, but they're not here, because we have an opening for a new commissioner. One of our commissioners, Samantha Babbage, is leaving. She's relocating over to the Seattle area with her husband, so that leaves us with a vacancy for the unexpired term ending December 2016. And we have extended the timeline for acceptance of applications, and that will be through the close of business on July 17th, so that's the end of next week. We still would like some more applications for this position. We, I'd like to say we have a lot of fun. We do on occasion, but it is a very interesting operation, the urban renewal. We get involved in a lot of community projects. One large one right now, we're building the overpass over the freeway at Greens Ferry. That's a very extensive and very interesting process. We did the Spokane Street renovation, and we have done other projects within the community and the, in the different districts. So just asking for anybody interested, if you would like more information on this, you can contact the Urban Renewal Office on the second floor of the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce Building, just a parking lot here, or you can call us at 700-
I'm named Tom Leon with the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and I would like to present our new commissioner, but they're not here, because we have an opening for a new commissioner. One of our commissioners, Samantha Babbage, is leaving. She's relocating over to the Seattle area with her husband. So that leaves us with a vacancy for the unexpired term ending December 2016. And we have extended the timeline for acceptance of applications, and that will be through the close of business on July 17th. So that's the end of next week. We still would like some more applications for this position. We, I'd like to say we have a lot of fun. We do on occasion, but it is a very interesting operation, the urban renewal. We get involved in a lot of community projects. One large one right now, we're building the overpass over the freeway at Greens Ferry. That's a very extensive and very interesting process. We did the Spokane Street renovation, and we have done other projects within the community, in the different districts. So just asking for anybody interested, if you would like more information on this, you can contact the Urban Renewal Office on the second floor of the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce Building, just a parking lot here, or you can call us at 777-8151, email us, or go on our website and look at the application there. Interviews are going to be scheduled prior to the commission workshop on August 12th, and we will do a selection during the regular commission meeting on August 20th. So I'd like to say thank you again for letting me make this announcement.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Bob?
As I addressed the council at the last city council meeting about this Avista project that's going on in the streets, I know some people think it was kind of funny, that I felt like I was living in a construction zone. There was one point, though, that I failed to bring up last time, and that was the cost what it is, or what it has cost the city of Post Falls, the taxpayers of Post Falls so far. See, approximately a year and a half ago, the city put a lot of money out, chip sealing and seal coating all those streets, and making them really nice. I mean, they did a great job of it. Well, now it looks like a gopher invasion, and after talking to the contractors, there is nothing in their contract about reseal coating any of these streets. Now, every year come budget time, we are told how much it costs per mile to seal coat and fix these streets every year. Why wasn't there anything in this agreement to make them fix what they're destroying? I'd like, I just, I'm curious about that, because according to them, there is nothing to make them reseal coat those streets. They're just going to patch them, just like they did Ponderosa, and be done with it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Good point.
Actually, I can speak to that, because we had a meeting last Tuesday with Bill Melvin and Russ Cannell there, and we are going to be meeting with Patty O'Shea to discuss them paying for the cost to reseal and chip those streets, because they did look like brand-new before Avista came in and started cutting them up. So we are approaching Avista, even though they are not required to, out of just good faith. We're hoping that they will agree to pay that cost.
We'll keep you posted, Bob. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say they are not required to, but you're working with them?
They're not legally required to do so, but we believe that they will at least partially pay. We hope they pay 100%, and that's what we're going to approach them with. We've had a really good working relationship with Avista, and so we believe if we approach them, that they will help us with that.
Thank you.
I had a question on that. I drove through that area, and isn't that county? Or is it city?
That's city.
All city.
I thought Pine Villa was still...
Pine Villa is.
Pine Villa 1 is in the county, so that's, would be east of Ross Point.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Bob.
And Bob, it does look kind of like a war zone over there.
It does.
I cruised around it the other day, and it's like...
It does.
Boy, there's a lot of steel plates on the ground, so hopefully they're successful in the negotiations, and in a few weeks, it's all done, chip sealed, and looks good again. It should be.
It will be more than a few weeks.
Yeah, it'll be more than a few months.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, the next item is new business, Project Atlas.
This project is a little bit more interesting than Project TAP and the process, because they have not yet made their decision to locate in Idaho. With the Opportunity Grant, they are really, that's a tipping point grant. It's supposed to be what assists them in deciding their location and coming to Idaho. So it's sort of like the chicken and the egg. They can't make their site selection, but yet they have to have already applied for the Opportunity Grant before they make their site selection. So I don't have dollar figures at this point. The number of jobs that would come to Idaho if this company were to locate, it's a fabrication welding metal company, would be 150 jobs, and they would be looking at a site that would be 80,000 to 110,000 square feet. So they would be applying for the Opportunity Grant Fund, not a Community Development Block Grant Fund. And so with ATC, we agreed to waive 50% of their site plan and building permit fees to be the match, and so that's the request that they have for this also. And also, this would approve the mayor's signature on the agreements for the Opportunity Grant Fund.
And just for informational purposes, it's not that anyone's trying to withhold names of companies, but the Opportunity Grant Fund is a competitive, is designed to provide a competitive edge. And in talking with Jeff Sayer from the Department of Commerce, if they come out and announce the name, et cetera, et cetera, it kind of defeats that competitive side of it. So we are not trying to be cutesy. We're not trying to withhold information, but that's why these companies that are looking to relocate it are referred to by a project name and not the name of the company.
So the city does not have the name of this company anywhere in their records, so if anybody does a public information request, all they're going to find is Project Atlas is the name. The other thing I'll mention is they do have two sites in Washington they're looking at currently. The one site, they're being offered free land, and the other site is at the airport, and they're being offered wholesale electricity costs. So those are the kind of competitive edges that the Opportunity Grant Fund helps offset to help assist them with making a decision to locate in Post Falls.
And Shelley, you need a motion tonight to move forward, or is that something you'll bring back?
To move forward, and then I would bring back the cost to the council at the time when I have the actual site plan, so we know exactly what their costs are going to be.
So this isn't necessarily approving the fee waiver, it's approving to move forward?
It's approving to move forward, but also I need kind of a somewhat of a go-ahead that you're going to waive the fees in order for me to put it in the grant application.
At least a portion thereof.
Or a portion of the fees.
Can this also be conditional?
Yes.
Yes, the same conditions.
Alan, you have a question first?
Yeah, at the bottom of the third paragraph, you indicated that you've included a copy of the two basic agreements. And I apologize for not getting back with you earlier, but I didn't see the agreements, and I didn't know...
I can email those to you. They were supposed to be included.
Is it anything...
It's just the boilerplate form agreements that the Department of Commerce has provided us. The one is an agreement between the Department of Commerce and the city, and the other is an agreement between the city and the actual project, stating that if they were to receive the funds and then not bring these jobs to Idaho, they would have to reimburse back the money.
Doesn't have any details about what we'd be waiving or anything like that?
No, this is just the, between the state on the Opportunity Grant Fund itself and the company and the city.
Skip?
Shelley, a question I didn't fully understand was, you said the site size was 100,000 square feet or something? I assume that's the building size.
Building size.
Okay.
I think they're looking at five acres. Five to 10, I'm not sure. There's two sites that they're looking, actually, there's three sites. There are two sites they're seriously looking at in Post Falls right now. There's a third backup site.
If there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to direct staff to proceed with the fee waivers contingent upon the Project Atlas actually bringing the requisite number of jobs to the city of Post Falls and contingent that the grant is actually obtained.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Can either need another motion or amend that motion to include the mayor's signature on the agreement?
So amended.
Second.
Further discussion? Would you like to take a roll again, please?
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
And I will email those agreements out.
Next up, ordinances and resolutions. We have one. It's a resolution for the Agreement for Federal Aid Highway Project AO 14334, southeast way to Mullen Bike Pad Trail along Highway 41.
Move to approve the resolution, Agreement for Federal Aid Highway Project A014334, southeast way to Mullen Bike Pad Trail along Highway 41.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Administrator staff reports?
We have none tonight, sir.
Next up, thank you, is mayor comments. A big thank you to the police department chief. As you, I'm sure, are well aware, there was a letter to the editor in the Corlaine Press. On June 17th, while installing a six-foot chain link fence, I suffered a heat stroke. Do not know how long I was out, but managed to call 911. First, the police, who I can't thank enough, got my face out of the dirt, then the ambulance and the fire department. I had my tractor parked in an alley hooked up to a fence stretcher. So I have the alley blocked, my dogs can't get out, and I'm on my way to the hospital. When my wife got to the hospital, she said the police informed her of what had happened. They also informed her that they finished the fence, the dogs were secure, and my tractor was back in our yard. I wish I knew their names. This was going above and beyond, and so I'm grateful to all of them, and it's signed Gary Cole, Post Falls. Chief, once again, you set the standard, your department sets the standard, and we're just blessed to have such an effective and efficient police force. So please pass our thanks and congratulations on to the whole department. We have a fire update, or fire update. We want to express our concerns for the firefighters and those who have lost their homes and those displaced. It's affecting everybody all around us. We're fortunate where we are right now, that it hasn't hit us, but it very well could, so, you know, please keep your mind and your hearts open to those who are suffering from the impact of the fire, so. Chief Merritt was here a couple of weeks ago and warned us, and unfortunately, his predictions have come true, so. And last, Alan, I want to congratulate and thank you. As everyone probably knows, if not you should, Councilor Wolf participated in The Ironman. Didn't finish it this year, but here's a guy who's older than me, who, sorry, I had to say that.
That's okay.
Who trained his backside off. He finished the swim, he finished the bike race, and he did it with the honor of raising money, wearing the bib that has been, was originally retired for ALS, correct? And Alan's had, I think it was your mother, and so he was chosen to wear the bib, and so, just a tremendous effort, and I congratulate and respect what you did, so thank you very much. Skip and I talked, and I don't think either one of us are going to try it next year.
Not soon.
Especially now it's 104 degrees.
Council comments?
And I will clarify, you didn't step out of the race. The medical team strongly suggested that you not continue, so he was on pace to have been able to finish it, and I'm sure that wasn't an easy...
Now, between the medical team and my wife...
Strongly encouraged him.
Credit where credit's due.
If he had a heat stroke, the PD would have finished the race for him.
I want, I had another, it didn't, it wasn't a letter to the editor, but about the PD, and these are the wonderful things, like whether it's the street department, any of the departments of the city. It seems to be, when you go to a grocery store, people, citizens will tell you more often than not, good things that are happening. And I had an employee of a trading company, oh, I think I emailed you this, an employee of a trading company, that, a grandmother, that locked her grandson in her car on one of these really hot days, totally freaked out as soon as she realized she had done it. The child was in a car seat, and the keys were right by their foot leg. Well, they couldn't get in, for some reason, some cars resist being able to pick the lock. They couldn't get in, and one of our officers, that you know the name of, that I can't recall, used the light on the taser, put it on the little boy's toe, so he was watching it, and then moved it over to the keys, and then the grandma said, "Pick up the keys, Devon, pick up the keys." Picked them up, and they got him to push the button. Happy ending, but how clever was that? But those are not uncommon stories, so thank you very much.
Normally, we don't use tasers.
I was going to say, on small children, yes.
I wanted that on the record, so thank you very much.
But it was the light.
Linda?
Well, mine is not going to be quite so happy, I'm afraid. I had a citizen contact me about a week ago and have spoke with, he and his wife, seven or eight times about this issue, and this is the issue. On Ninth Street, off of Spokane Street, there is a block there to the east that is zone commercial. How that happened was back in the early 2000s, there was a lady who owned Wagon Tales Dog Grooming. She wanted to have an in-home business on the corner of Frederick and Ninth, and the city changed the zone on that first block of Ninth Street to limited neighborhood commercial at that time. She only stayed a couple of years. So now, this person who owns the house at 105 East Ninth Street wants to build a detached garage or shop, a dry storage building, no water, no sewer, no power, to store his truck and his boat. He came to City Hall and was told that because it's on a commercial lot, that he was going to have to build it to commercial standards, put curb gutter sidewalks there, put a handicap parking spot there, a regular parking spot there, and pay for sewer water cap fees and build it to commercial standards. He got a bid for all of those things, and that bid came out to $22,000 more than the building itself was going to be, going to cost this man. So needless to say, he was not happy. He called me, I had him call the planner, the building department, and then eventually Russ Cannell, and we didn't get anywhere with that, so this citizen said, "Well, what about going for a zone change?" I contacted our Public Works Director, and he said that he felt, and I have the email for this, that he felt that the planning and building department would not support that, because it's a block off of Spokane Street, and Spokane Street is zone commercial. There's five houses on that first block of Ninth Avenue. The only commercial building that's even around there is the side of the pit stop. That fronts on Spokane Street, but the side of it is on Ninth. I just think that, I mean, through this process, number one, the citizen is upset, and I don't blame him. He wants to do a residential improvement to a place where he lives, and because the lot is zone commercial, you can't build onto it, you can't make any improvements to it, you can't do anything to it. And so I just feel like there has to be a solution to this, not only on East Ninth Avenue, but on many, many, many other lots in this town where residences, people, citizens are living in houses on lots that are zone commercial, and I would just, I mean, I would just ask that we come up with some sort of an idea, a code, an ordinance, a rule, whatever, to allow people who live in residences, who want to make residential improvements to their property on a commercial lot, as long as they're not going to do any kind of commercial out of there, that they be allowed to make those improvements on those lots.
I can see that's something that we're going to have to take a deep look at. I understand the frustration, I understand the concern. Would you guys come back to us and bring us some thoughts, recommendations, ideas, possible solutions, see what we can do?
Yeah, we can bring back to the next meeting, Russ. Does that work?
Yes. Does that work, Linda?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Good. Thank you very much.
I had a question along that line. Who, can the property owner make the request for a...
Zone change?
A zone change.
He can make the request for a zone change. That request is $1,200, and the, the planning or building or both have already stated that they would be opposed to that, that they would advise the council to vote against that. So, I mean, if that's not going to work, why waste the $1,200? And it's not only going to be on this street, because if we look around town, I mean, there is so many instances where this is, where this is going to happen, if it hasn't already happened. And this is just the only one I'm privy to, but I'm sure that somebody in, you know, in these departments have been asked this before, and if they haven't, they're going to be.
Could you guys bring back some information?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, I know I sent an email to Shelley to possibly set up a workshop around this kind of thing, because you're right, Linda, I mean, the homeowners are in a bind. We, you know, we put our own department in... bind, we, they're, you know, we put our own department in a bind, because we've asked them to do certain things, so I think it's important that we sit down and hash this out, and try to find a way to be helpful for both Russ and his team, and for the property owners, whether it's commercially zoned property, or residential, or whatever. But I want to be the nice city that's trying to help people out.
Accommodating.
Yeah. But I understand where you guys are coming from, too, so.
Good.
Right, and one, that was in response, I think, to the permits that I sent out a couple of weeks ago, and so part of that was also looking at what our fees are, and what they're associated with on those different projects. And we do have comparisons with some of the other cities on those, too, to look at.
Sad to that, too, I like your idea, but I know we've had a workshop on this before, but I think we should continue to have them, because there's this issue here, and there are other issues that keep popping up. One that comes to mind is a business in town who had a sign by the road, a business sign, it got hit by a drunk driver, destroyed the sign, he wanted to put a new sign on the building, but to get to put it on the building, had to file for a permit that costs several hundred dollars, I can't remember. Another business going up on Third Street, has a gym, and they wanted to have roll-up doors on the side, but if you put roll-up doors on the side, then it becomes a loading dock, and you can't put parking out there, and if you can't put parking out there, there weren't enough spots to have a commercial building, even though it's not a loading dock, it's just to let air through. I mean, there's a lot of little things that just, we regulate down to minutia, and, and charge for everything that just isn't reasonable for the use at the time. You guys have to follow what laws are there, so I completely understand where you're, where you're coming from on that. I just think we all need to come together and find a more sensible way to do something, because one size fits all, it doesn't work. So, it's just my thoughts.
And on the planning side, you know, those are laws that typically the council has put, or agreed to put on ourselves as a city. On the building code side, some of it is safety, and, and when we look at that, we won't be able to change that. So just, you know, when you're looking at some of that, on the roll-up doors, I don't know exactly how that fits in, but it may have something to do with the building code versus the planning code.
Right, and some stuff we may not be able to do anything about, because it's a state issue and not a city issue, and, but, you know, again, this being, you guys are the experts, and, and I think the rest of us only have so much time to research, so we rely pretty heavily on you to, what can we change, what can we not?
Right.
And what's, and from, from experience, what's a horrible idea, and what's doable, so.
Good, my workshop's a good idea, too.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Next item, we do need an executive session, correct?
How long?
Ten minutes.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of legal and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but intimately likely to be, to be litigated, that no action will be taken, and the session should last approximately 10 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Motion passed, I think we'll enter executive session.